Islam, peace and love, peace and love. We are here, we are here, we are here for thirty minutes more or less. Gratitude to the Moors who joined. Thank you to those who gonna see this later, you know, Islam, Islam, won't keep y'all too long. Uh, cuz as you usual, you know, and more than as usual cuz all planets direct as of yesterday. Um, yeah, I'm busy, so I'm guessing y'all busy too. So I won't keep you too long and I got my notes, right? Cuz why? I respect your time. Alright, so, welcome to our Saturday Sabbath, Saturday or Sabbath study session, right? Um, where I take in questions or respond to, I guess, respond to events, right? And try to put a Moorish perspective while, you know, engaging in some edutainment while I'm at it, you know? Cuz I love to learn. I like to make things fun, like to keep it light, you know, so people will keep coming back and we can share and, you know, spread the good word and get our stuff back, right? Cuz at the end of the day, that's what this is all about, at least. That's what I see what it's all about. But anyway, um, and that actually leads into what I wanted to talk about today. Um, responding to, uh, well, the topic is denotative versus connotative, right? So, in our quest, you know, as Moors, in our quest for clarity and understanding, you know, language plays a big part in getting our meaning across. But, you know, the intricacies of denotation and connotation, that, you know, that can lead to some confusion, right? Especially in the context of identity and heritage, especially in these days of time, right? People are playing with words so much now. I don't know if you all have been seeing how you can't even have a conversation with people. It's, I find it difficult to have a conversation with people without having to be like, stopping every other word to make sure we're talking about the same thing. When like, bef- twenty nineteen, I say pre, yeah, pre twenty twenty, pre March twenty twenty, stuff was easy to talk about. Everybody knew what a woman was. Now we gotta be like, okay, are we both using the same definition? It's nuts, right? And I don't think that's by, that's, that's not by, you know, mistake. It's, it's purposeful. You know, we actually were, you like reading and you've read, you know, nineteen eighty-four with the, uh, what was it, with double speak? Whatever they called it in that book. Yeah, there, there you go. They gave you the game plan right there cuz the devil can't do nothing before letting his victims know what he's up to. Right? And then you can either choose to go along with it or I wouldn't say resist it, just get out the way, right? Cuz, peace beyond to Job for taking that L. The devil can't, can't touch us anymore. He can only suggest, right? Or send his legion out to touch us, touch him, touch us on his behalf, put it like that. Or Satan, whatever you wanna refer to the, uh, the outside entities that inflict, impose themselves upon people that didn't ask him to do that, right? Um, but anyway, as usual, I wanna start with the definitions, right? So I'm talking about denotation versus connotation. And, um, especially in, from the perspective of Moors, just because I'm seeing how much of our stuff is being stolen and/or being used against us just because we're going along with connotations instead of holding people accountable to the denotation, right? They don't wanna talk about denotation because that means they have to be admitting to some crimes, right? So anyway, I'm, um, start with the definition, so, you know, I'm not gonna assume or presume people know what I'm talking about, right? Cuz you might have your definite, if you've read a lot, you think you know what a word means in context cuz it's been showing up in that context, but it always helps to just make sure, right? So I'm making sure, using my, um, big old stack of dictionaries. Let me see if I can turn the camera. That's a few of my dictionaries. Yes, those are all dictionaries, right? I love words. Words are my babies, right? Um, but anyway, so, um, from that big giant unabridged dictionary, right? The first, first definitions are coming from my Webster's unabridged dictionary from nineteen fifty-five, right? Why unabridged, right? From this dictionary, what does unabridged mean? It's an adjective. It means not shorted or shortened, complete, specifically designed, specifically designating a dictionary that has not been abridged from a larger work. So, yeah, I was, Allah led me to this dictionary from a, um, I think it's from a library that was closing down. This is one of those, the ones that you are, you have to have like somebody help you but lift it into a truck type of thing, right? Cuz it's got like every word and then the, the ones you can slip in your pocket refer to this one. So anyway, this is where the definitions are coming from. So conote, right? It's a transitive verb. Conoted, connoting, right? To suggest or convey associations or overtones, et cetera. It's in addition to the explicit or denoted meaning. As the word mother means female parent, but generally it connotes to love, care, tenderness. Like, oh, you know, my friend is sick, so I'm gonna go over there and mother him. Get it? So that's the connotation. Denotation is the female parent that actually gave birth to you, right? So, yeah, denotative is, it's an adjective. That's the next definition. Denotative. Adjective. Having power to denote, right? Designic- wait, designatev? Yeah, designatev. To denote, right? Transitive verb. Denoted, denoting. Dino-tare, to mark, to mark out and, um, to mark down, right? To mark, to signify by a visible sign, to indicate, to express, to designate, to refer to said, to a set of words, sign, or symbols, and distinguished from conote, right? To be the sign or symptom of, to show, to be the token, to indicate, as a quick pulse denotes a fever, right? So the difference, short version of that is, the difference is, um, they honestly took out all my definitions. The shorter, shortened version of that is, we've been specifically referring to Moors, alright? To illustrate the difference between denotation and connotation. I'm bringing this up because I don't know if people had a chance to see it, but I, I posted, um, a video from my visit with my children to the Indiana State Museum, right? Peace and Islam, hanging out at the Indiana State Museum, looking at the Native American section. You see this? Y'all see this? This is why it is so important for us to put out our own media. Look at this mess. And I'm so glad I'm here with my children. Yeah, look at this. Very, no, not knocking it, right? I wanna look up and see who that curator is cuz they did a fabulous job, except on this part. I had a huge problem with this part, right? Because, you know, they showing, uh, how the settlers encroached on the land. I'm giving you my interpretation from my, my, my Moorish eyes. How the settlers encroached on the people's lands, you know? Move next, I'm gonna put up the pictures. So I suggest if you wanna see everything I'm talking about, um, as usual, it'll be posted to YouTube sometime, Sunday morning or evening or afternoon, whatever. But it was funny because it was a diorama of, I'm telling you what it looked like to me. Some settlers found a village of Moors. This is what it looks like to me, right? And set up a fence next to them and then put up a village inside, put up their, their colony, you know, like bacteria, bacterial colonies. Put up their colony next to this village. I'm like, wow, they just, they straight up infected these people. And then now instead of being able to go, you know, make a straight walk from their village to the river, they had to go around this gated off area from these people who just moved in next to them and put up a fence, right? I'm just like, wow, this is crazy. And then you, uh, you, you keep strolling through, you know how they lead you through the exhibit and I'm like, oh, look at that. There's the, uh, an image of the modern day people that they were saying were encroached upon or whatever. And it looks just like the people that were behind the fence, right? I'm just like, yeah, this is messed up. Where's the truth? You know, they can't, they always got, they got the truths hidden somewhere. And again, I'm gonna have the images put up on, um, YouTube, right? I love that I'm, I'm like a small so-called creator because hopefully after I'm done, you know, it's like one of those things. I hope they don't see this because I don't wanna not be invited back, that kinda thing. Um, but yeah, I went, we went around the corner and I'm not joking, I think I got that on video too. We went around the corner and tucked like under a, a, a little ledge in the dark with some pictures of the Moors that they were dealing with, the ones, you know, you see in the little lithographs with the, wearing the red, white, and the blue and all the feathers and all that stuff and they actually got their names written on it. Yeah, that was right there. Saying, yeah, these are the people that the folks you just saw around the corner, these are their forefathers, you know, if you actually found this. And it's like, wow. Okay. So denotative and back to connotative. Um, I wish I could get my other definitions up. Let me see if I can bring those up cuz they were, they were dope. Um, cool. Yeah, here we go. Yeah, y'all get to follow along. Alright, so, back to the other definition. So implicit, right? So again, we left off at denote and I'm not gonna keep y'all too long, you know, we just learning together, right? Cuz we gotta start, uh, holding people's feet to the fire, making, cuz if we, I'll get to that, right? Because the Moors are the ones who really supposed to be doing this cuz right now, everybody is lying, right? Everybody's got blood on their hands. Nobody has a right to speak. None of that applies to us, right? That kinda thing. So I say we do something with it, like save the world. For real, cuz it looks like it's going to hell in a handbasket. That's just what it looks like to me, right? And I think we can, we, we're the only ones not doing anything and I think that's why this is happening. It's like the, the children are losing their damn minds and mom and dad are just sitting there. It's come out, what, what, should we do something? You know, yeah, you should do something. Anyway, so back to the definitions. So conote means, you know, just the general, whatever people use in everyday conversation. And then denote, denotative, um, that's what it actually means, which is why sometimes you'll hear me say denotative, not connotative, or connotative, not denotative, right? To make sure there's no confusion, cuz there's a lot of confusion going on right now, right? Yeah, exactly. The generational hatred is real because everybody's confused. Nobody, people can't communicate with each other cuz everybody's speaking a different language. Which is why I suggest we go the denotative route, right? So, uh, next definition, implicit, right? Adjicate, adjective, right? Formally, it means implicated and tangled. It's, it means to suggest it or to be understood though not plainly expl- expressed. It's implied, distinguished from explicit. So implicit, right? It's distinguished from explicit. Next definition is necessarily or naturally involved, though not plainly apparent or expressed, right? Essentially a part of or condition or is inherent. So they just, you see how it's just like, eh, touching on it, touching on it? It's like that whole partial thing. I don't like the part in partial. I can't find that anywhere in law. And when I look up partial, it means basically you're flaky. Because you could be partial to something today, partial to something else tomorrow, right? It's implied that you're faithful. It's implied that you're committed. Don't be implicit, be explicit, right? So implied, the definition of that is involved, suggested, or understood, but not actually expressed. No promises. It's some, it's like slither, it's sneaky, right? Um, yeah, so you don't want implied. You don't want implicit. You want expressed and explicit, right? Make people, you know, put it down, like, fine print. I don't like fine print, right? Cuz if you need that many details, I understand, I understand why people have it. But in these days and times, it's not to protect, it's to take advantage of people, right? But if you like reading, you shouldn't handle a problem with it, but most people don't like reading all that stuff. Um, but anyway, so the definition of explicit means to unfold, to explain. X as in out and plikare as in to, as in to fold, which is the opposite of implicit, which is M, which is, uh, means to, to bring it in and plikare fold. So fold in, right? You know, you want it to fold out. I wanna see everything, right? Exactly. No, what is that? Adhesion contracts. What exactly are we signing? Not just me. Does that make sense? You could, cuz people think, oh, it's implied that there is somebody else involved in this contract. No, you want it to be expressed by seeing another signature there. Get it? I'm gonna get to why, um, this is, this matters especially for Moors, right? So, explicit. Plain and language. Distinctly expressed, definite, clearly stated, not obscure or ambiguous. Expressed, not merely implied. Distinguished from implicit. Outspoken. Saying what is meant with no disguised meaning or reservation. Applied to the person, uh, wait, applied to persons as he was explicit in his terms, right? Word is bond. My contracts are like two pages long because I ha- I'm making sure I'm, nothing's gonna happen to you. I know what I'm gonna do, right? So I know, um, I'm just making sure that I, I can't change my mind because I'm not expecting you to do anything to me because I'm not trying to do nothing to you, right? So I need to keep this short, that kinda thing. So, um, I'm finding that when people have to go into a whole lot of detail, you know they're saying the devil's in the detail? There, um, that's an implication of dishonesty. Again, I understand why you need, needed in some cases, right? And I'm not gonna go into that, like mortgages and all that stuff. Why they four, why is this thing fourteen to thirty pages long unless you trying to hide something? Right? It's just a house. It's not like a nation, that kinda thing. And then you see what they're really supposed to look like. It's like, yeah, there's a lot of implication going on in this thing. And then you find out that they're just illegal from the jump. But anyway, um, yeah, about to wrap this up in a minute. So, and why I'm, I'm, I'm making this so important and getting so amped about it, if you can tell. Uh, Black's Law Dictionary, fourth edition, right? And this is how it gets into the legal realm cuz there's Moors, we're supposed to be dealing with law, both secular and divine, you know? So implied, this word is used in law as contract, again, here come that word, as contracted with express, i.e. where the intention in regard to the subject matter is not manifested by explicit and direct words, but is gathered by implication or necessary deduction from the circumstances, the general language, or the conduct of the parties, alright? Um, and then it goes in as in to obligation, agreement, assumption, condition, confession. Sometimes if you know what you're doing, like if somebody tried to get you, right? Like, um, yeah, a, a such as. I knew somebody who was underage and they went and bought a car. Like, I thought you couldn't do that, you couldn't enter the contracts like that until you were six, eighteen. That's correct. But this person did it anyway. Because they knew this person was sixteen years old and tried to sell them a car with, I think it was like a forty-five percent interest rate on a car, a used car. Because they knew they could do this to a sixteen-year-old, right? So, this person, sixteen years old, driving the car for one month, two months, third month gets a bill to match you owe enough to buy, now buy a new car. Or we coming to get the old car? So, this person's guardian calls me. I'm like, oh, this is easy. It's an implied contract. It was implied that you knew you were talking to somebody eighteen unless you knew you were engaging in fraud. Would you like the court, would you like to continue this matter to court? Cuz we sure can, cuz guess who gonna get in trouble if we do? So that person just, you know, signed off on the, um, what was that? The, uh, the title? And just gave the car over cuz they knew they couldn't do nothing. It's like, yeah, you gonna, what, you, you want it back in two years after a sixteen-year-old been playing with a free car? Probably not. Just, just write it off as a loss. So that, in that case, implied did work. Cuz that per- it, it, it backfired on the person who tried to do it, I'll put it like that. So, yeah. This is why you do not wanna, want implied contracts, you know, unless you know how to do contracts and you know, okay, you trying to get me. Let, what is that saying? I'm gonna have you for lunch before you have me for dinner, that kinda thing. Oh, you gonna do that? Okay. Or you can be honest and be like, no, 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 I want an explicit contract with, here's the definition from my Black's Law. Not obscure or ambiguous, not having, having no disguised meaning or reservations. Alright, then it goes into the, um, the case, um, citation. Express, clear, definite, explicit, unmistakable, no, not dubious or ambiguous. Declared in terms, set forth in words, directly and distinctly stated. Made known distinctly and explicitly and left, and not left to inference. Manifested by direct and appropriate language, as distinguished from that which is inferred from conduct. The word is usually contrasted with implied. Again, this is why, um, now about to get into why this stuff is so important as Moors, right? Islam, and thank you to everybody who's joined. I appreciate you for joining. And, um, yeah, the edit will be up sometime tomorrow and it'll be, yeah, 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 I'm gonna go in on that one. So, examples of the, um, the abuse of language, right? The actual, for real, abuse of language, which makes, which makes perfect sense. We're coming out of the age of Pisces, right? We're still on the horizon. We haven't crossed into Aquarius yet. We right there though, right? And, and we're coming out of delusion and into truth, right? If you know the difference between a Pisces and an Aquarius. Pisces are real dreamy and all that stuff. Aquarius is like, no, no nonsense and it better be fair for everybody, that kinda thing, right? No matter how cold they come off, they want everybody to be good, right? So, here's the truth, right? American, here's a great example. People use it connotatively. Me personally, no. When people say, oh, I'm American. No, where are you from? Where does your, where are you originally from? Cuz I'm American. I stop them right there. They look shocked for one, two, three, and then they tell me. Because they're waking up to, right? They see what's going on. This whole thing with Israel, which is another one I'm getting to in a second, right? This whole thing with Israel, they are talking about Israel and I think some of them are being like, man, this, this feels real. Why does this sound so familiar? And then they realize, oh, yeah, that's my story too, right? So bad that, and it's, it's in all the remaining colonies. What, Canada, the United States, New Zealand, Australia? Down in Australia, I don't know if you all have heard, they're having like, um, epidemic of the young males dropping out of college. Because they getting tired of sitting in their history classes and every time it comes to anybody's story, they're the big bad wolf in everybody's story. And they just getting tired of, and there's nothing they can do to defend themselves. They didn't do nothing. It's just their, their inheritance, that kinda thing, right? So, um, anyway, so American. How people are connotatively using it as, okay, instead of denotative, the indigenous people of North, Central, and South America and the adjoining islands, denotative. Instead, they're using the connotative version. If the immigrant population of the United States only. When they say American, they are not even talking about Canadians, Mexicans, Peruvians, Venezuelans, Brazilians. No, none of them. It's just the people who have at the least tie to this continent. It's wild as I don't know what, to me. It's like, dang. At least the people in America, the mo- most of these people that y'all call Hispanics and Latinos, they can trace themselves to a Moorish woman some way, somehow. Depending on when, you, you can tell the ones that can't. You know the ones that can't. They, just based on the numbers and how, how long it took for the Spanish women to get over here. Yeah, we know which ones can trace themselves to a Moorish woman because we trace ourselves through our women, right? It's a natural, um, lineal thing. Um, cuz all you can know is your mother. But no, they, they are not considered Americans when pretty much the whole world is going along with that nonsense and saying, oh, yeah, when you say American, you mean the United States is. And anybody in the United States, except those people, except those people who have the rightful claim to the land, right? But that's kind of our fault cuz we won't stand up and claim it. But anyway, that's the denotative versus connotative. That's top of my list. Next is Israel, right? Israel. The chosen people of Allah from the line of Jacob. Denotative. Versus that colony currently set up in modern-day Palestine occupied, occupied by people unqualified to claim that inheritance. Connotative, right? And it's causing so much confusion, right? And then they contributing to it in more than just one way cuz they're like the, 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 um, what is that? The gender dysphoria. What is that word? Um, code, gender dysphoria, um, enabling nation on earth. There we go. United States is a close second. And I'm just like, I was listening to somebody have a conversation about trying to deal with a female, somebody who was born female and had started, they were now in their twenties and had started transitioning when they were like thirteen and everybody was talking about them. They weren't, the person wasn't there. And they just could not have the conversation because they kept saying he, she, it, they, but, but they couldn't even just have a simple conversation because of this confusion. And I'm like, why don't you just be denotative, right? If an archaeologist digs her up in a thousand years and does DNA on her bones, what would it be? Say that. Keep it simple. No, let's complicate things. Y'all can complicate things. I think it's the job of the Moors to be like, nope, we gotta stop this stuff. And I'll get to why it should be the Moors doing it, right? So next one, next example. White. How people, y'all know how to, how to use it. White, right? It's a class status, denotative, but how they using it in these colonies? Connotatively, right? Where they're associating it with a skin color. That's not even the right skin color. They're not white, they're pink, right? But, yeah, people just going along with it, you know, inheriting all kinds of lies, just letting it slide. No. Moors are not supposed to do that and I'm gonna tell you why. We gotta st- 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 stop stuff. Ha, ha, this is perfect. Alright, I'm almost, I'm almost done, y'all. Uh, more. Here's my favorite one. Here's another one. More swarthy and copper-skinned indigenous people of Northwest and Southwest of Maxim and the adjoining islands. Denotative. But when you actually look it up or you talk to most people, the various mixed Arab and Berber desert-dwelling North Africans. Connotative, right? Which is so funny. It's like, yeah, those people in Morocco, they call themselves Moroccan Arabs. They do not call themselves Moroccan Moors. Why not? Okay, um, and then again with the, the same people with these Israelis. I thought y'all were, why don't y'all call yourselves Israelites? But whatever, you know? But I'm talking to the some, so, I'm not, not y'all. These are the same people that don't care where their human god with a birthday where he was for eighteen years. He was gone longer than y'all know he was there. But y'all don't care where he was for eighteen years from twelve, twelve, that's a child. Now emerging man, twelve to thirty. So that's why I'm like, nah, we need to put a stop to this stuff and just be like, okay, stop. Why us, right? Why us? Alright. Because colonists play fast and loose with these terms, right? The Bible says Israelite bloodline, but we're letting colonists get away with trying to convert a bloodline to a nationality. They actually say, oh, yeah, come over here. No, perfect example, um, Donald Trump's daughter, right? So you mean to tell me, I love it. Here's the confusion. Here's the confusion. So you mean to tell me, um, your grandfather is German. Your, I'm talking about, um, uh, Ivanka Trump. Your grandfather is German. Yeah, your grandfather is German. Your grandmother was Irish. They had your father, Donald, he's American. See where you should have put your foot down right there? He's American. But now that you married this Jewish dude, you married him. Now you're Jewish. You're attached to that bloodline because you married him. I'm just like, really? And I was just like, and why is this being allowed to happen? Because we're not saying anything. I'm not even saying, you know, um, get up on those soapbox or anything. You don't let that stuff pass because you don't know who Allah is gonna put in your path to be, to, to check them gently, right? But do check them. So that, and you don't know who they gonna be. That might be a professor who ain't gonna teach that stuff no more. And now you just affected who knows how many generations. Just because you said, eh, eh, no, did you know? Gently, gently, right? That's not true. You know, the truth is, right? And they, they gonna, you know how people bow down to us, you know, cuz we know they lying. I know they lying, right? And then, um, yeah, it's just crazy to me, right? So, why Moors? Why are we the ones that are, I'd say are supposed to be the ones putting up a stop to this nonsense? So who are the Moors? You know, besides fabulous, you know, handsome people, that kinda thing. Who are the Moors? Moors are, I love it. moors are ruled this is astrology you know because we we engage all the sciences astrology and astro astronomy you know what we can actually see and then applying that to the energies that they're putting off just like how the moon pulls the tides what are these other bodies doing while they going around this planet that's astrology right so I'm applying that so who are the moors in astrology moors are ruled by the planet Saturn right because if you want to look up Saturn in um Vedic astrology I think his name is Swati right and see what you find um and I actually I'll make sure I'll put it in the video on on YouTube so more um moors are ruled by the planet Saturn Saturn is the only planet that rules two consecutive signs is tripped out it rules Capricorn right which is um cardinal earth and feminine right then it rules the next sign which is Aquarius which is fixed masculine air right and then I'm like okay so we ruled those two signs those consecutive signs one masculine one feminine balance right right next to each other at the top of the chart they look down on everything interesting interesting right and I wrote it down um excuse me it's been dry so so yeah the Moorish American community is called upon to put an end to this literal figurative figurative and actual madness you know we're ruled by Saturn the planet of lessons legacy and the collective swarthy people and karma and where you nick uniquely positioned to bring clarity to this discourse Saturn again governs both Capricorn a cardinal feminine earth sign and Aquarius a fixed masculine air sign signifying a deep connection to tradition and a commitment to the collective good right um and it's funny I didn't get the the whole swarthy thing you have to study I don't study the I do I study all of them but uh all the the versions of astrology I can find but the sources I try to consider the most are the ones that had the least colonization even though everybody had it so you know if you had a little just a little bit of colonization and or you weren't involved in colonization you probably more credible which is why I suggest if you really want to study it study those Baltic Baltic like the Russians and the Lithuanians and all them they're amazing astrologers right and they're the ones saying they predicted Obama um becoming president because of where Saturn was during that um election cycle it was really funny so but yeah I think that's all I got my conclusion um yeah in a world where language is manipulated not often manipulate manipulated y'all know about you know spelling how you gotta be so careful with your words because whatever you let slide you know letting somebody tell you who you are or letting somebody tell you who they are and they send in your face telling you that they are you I don't know about you but I'm gonna say something right and in these days and times moors have been making enough noise at this point where they know what you talking about and I for real think at this point they just testing us so you know they take your temperature let them know right because I want my stuff back right I've been house shopping you know dreaming out loud like I don't want to take nobody's stuff I'm just gonna wait for what happened in South Africa and all the other colonies to happen when they were finally cast out those people didn't have to do nothing the colonists knew like okay it's enough we know it's way more of them than us and we really don't have no right to be here and I know what I would do if I was in their situation we don't have to ask them to leave even though we wouldn't do that you know and they probably know we wouldn't do it but would you want to take that chance I wouldn't right but um anyway so yeah um so yeah in a world where language is often manipulated to to um suit particular agenda agendas understanding the nuances of denotation and connotation becomes crucial this is no time for active Moorish Americans to lean on inference we must assert our claim in no uncertain terms guided by the principles of clarity and of course love truth peace freedom and justice with the responsibility to dismantle misconceptions and uphold the authenticity of denotative meanings right and by doing so we can navigate this language maze with confidence you know and ensure that our cultural identities are being accurately represented and again I'm gonna put up that picture of the people who are current currently claiming our identities because we're letting them instead of just checking them it's not like like I demand you stop doing that you all you gotta do is say I know that's not true if asked I'm not saying go find nobody if that opportunity presents itself right because we know there are no happenings right are you gonna be Mary or are you gonna be Peter which is so funny they call a coward or Mary right which one you gonna Mary didn't run right that kind of thing Mary followed him the whole time Peter ran so whatever and then deny he knew the man like oh my goodness so which one you gonna be I think that's why why that stuff happens so yeah um with that thank you all moors I appreciate your your time and attention and that's why I did it I said today was perfect because again check it out look into the planet Saturn especially what he looks like in Vedic astrology because here we are on Saturday this is a Saturn rule day the day of rest when God was done with his work right and and looked back and saw what Allah had done that was the you know there you go seventh day is ruled by Saturn and you know um yeah we started at seven o'clock which is ruled by Saturn right so yeah with that being said Islam to y'all um yeah we got yeah nothing you say our knowledge I'm just reading some of the comments my fault um yeah I'm still getting used to this thing I really appreciate y'all being up in here yeah y'all need to talk to Kush because he telling out he wanna um do a book signing in Jamaica or something and you know Khalifa Media is definitely willing to like do what we can to contribute to making that happen so who want to go read books in Jamaica I do so yeah let Kush know you wanna uh hit him up and let him know you want to go to Jamaica and uh get it get your book signed alright we gonna set something up for real and with that yeah thank no problem I'll be back next week you know y'all got some ideas or want to discuss something more because I think I want to go keep going into these terms I like these terms right just because it's so many lies floating around who's telling the truth spot a need fill a need I volunteer so join me if you want and with that peace and love moors gratitude who's in Jamaica hey hit me up DM me for real I'm not joking I've never been to Jamaica there we go so yeah I want to go oh you can't message Kush alright no problem no problem I think you got an email or something alright go well we'll work something out you can let me know I'll put up a poll or something and we'll see who want to go because I want to go alright peace and love I'll check y'all later and bye bye y'all